2005 was an important year. At the very beginning of the year, George Bush was inaugurated into his second term, and YouTube was founded. In May, Star Wars Episode III: Revenge of the Sith hit theaters in Cary Underwood once season four of American Idol. And finally, in August, around the same time that Hurricane Katrina hit the southern United States, the class of 2018 started kindergarten.
It's an honor to stand before you today. I'm so lucky to be here because today I will be the first person from my family to graduate high school. My parents used to tell my siblings and I that education is the candle that lights the world. Thankfully, I was able to light my candle at North Star.
High school is a moment. There's very little else to it. Granted, it is a four-year moment, but it is a moment nonetheless. A moment that we can compact down into a two-line poem. High. School.
High school is a time of pondering questions about our identity, asking ourselves, who am I? Who will accept me? What place in the world is there for someone like me?
Some may scoff at this phrase, but it's true. Diversity is our strength, ideologically and physically. The fact that we're able to learn from each other and pass that information on to others is an asset not every school has to the degree we do. That's why I think we're going to be some of the smartest, most influential people in the coming years.
I believe that we are all in a constant state of becoming, and it is split-second moments that shape us. But even the moment, even more than the moments, is the people with whom we spend them.
I challenge you to focus on the important. Stop letting everyone tell you who you want to be. You get to decide that on your own.
No matter who we are or what we do, we will be great. Forbes magazine published an article in the April of 2018 dubbing Generation Z, that's us, as the most innovative, tech-savvy, and education-oriented generation yet.
Post-high school, opportunities won't come to those who wait for them to fall into the palm of their hand. We have to make the transition from our parents pushing us into uncomfortable situations to us pushing ourselves.
So thank you, teachers. Thank you, friends, and family, and loved ones. You helped make us who we are today.
Every person here, you are a part of my story.
And Ms. Byer is excused this evening.
You helped me break the norm and gain social skills.
The Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted and available at the main entrance of the
For an introvert like me, it is a great achievement.
room. We have minutes from our regular meeting on June 12 and the budget forum on June 12.
Ashwin was one of my favorite classes.
We also have the minutes from the June 13 board retreat and the June 14 budget forum
When you think of a positive in the future, maybe it can help you remember this way idea.
for approval. Are there any additions or corrections? Seeing none, all minutes stand approved as published.
Make a Difference in the World by Ali Churich, with all they have learned from us.
This school year, Lincoln Public Schools celebrated academic excellence with many of our high school students from across the community who achieved the highest possible
Ashwin World, be positive, create a plus one.
ACT scores and were named National Merit Finalists and Presidential Scholars.
So hugs, let's say, thank you, and watch your world a better place.
For our student celebration this evening, we have invited three LPS high school seniors
Thank you.
This meeting of the Lincoln Public Schools Board of Education for June 26, 2018, is
who had the highest possible ACT scores to come up and share their stories. But first, we're going to begin with Leslie Eastman, Director of Assessment and Evaluation at LPS. Then we will hear from our students. I will let her introduce them as well.
Great, thank you. Good evening.
called to order.
No pressure following the graduation speakers, right?
April, would you please call the roll?
Sorry.
Mr. Boswell?
I just wanted to take a few moments to share a little bit of general information
Present.
Mrs. Danic?
Here.
Mr. Mayhew?
about the ACT before we get on to the best part of this evening and our three student
Present.
Ms. Mumgarth?
Here.
Mr. Schulte?
Here.
Mrs. Duncan?
speakers. The ACT was first developed in 1959 as a competitor to the SAT. Both the SAT and the ACT are college entrance exams. The original purpose for both exams was that every college applicant would have the same opportunity to demonstrate knowledge and skills, and therefore leveling the playing field a little bit for college applications. The idea was that college entrance would no longer be about who you know, but who you are and what you know. Lincoln Public Schools has been administering the ACT to all juniors for the last eight years, first as part of a pilot program and then part of the state assessment program. Beginning in the 2016-2017 school year, Nebraska began using the ACT as part of the overall state assessment system. So currently, all juniors across the state of Nebraska take the ACT in the spring of their junior year in high school. Tonight, we're going to introduce you to three LPS students who achieved the highest possible score on the ACT, a score of 36. These are not the only LPS students who earned a 36, but they are really nice representation of the group. Very few students score a 36 on the ACT. Nationally, it's less than 1%. This represents an extraordinarily high level of achievement, a testament to the outstanding academic opportunities that LPS provides for our students. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce the first student, Emma Jewell from Lincoln East High School, to say a few words.
Good evening, and thank you so much for inviting me to speak. My name is Emma Jewell, and I graduated from East in May. I want to begin by talking about my high school experience, both academically and otherwise. I'm thankful to have grown up in a school district with a proud tradition of excellent public education, the appropriately high standard to which LPS schools are held certainly shown through in my experience at East. Namely, I had many fantastic teachers who not only ensured that their students were proficient in the curriculum of the class, but also created opportunity for inquiry and discussion around topics that may not have been a part of the curriculum. The view on learning presented by these teachers, that it could come in many forms and could concern a variety of topics, is something that I credit for my success on the ACT. At its core, the ACT is a test of principles of learning, of problem-solving, and of reading comprehension. My varied and engaging classroom experiences certainly enabled me to see problems and interact with texts from many different angles. What I credit most with my success on the ACT, however, is not my academic experiences, but rather my participation on the East speech team. Besides creating an invaluable community of friendship and support, speech taught me hard work. It taught me that perseverance and grit can produce clear and meaningful results. I didn't get a 36 on the ACT because of my innate academic talents or because of test-taking skills, but rather because I studied hard, knowing that it would pay off. In fact, based on some quick Googling, in the past five years, seven out of the 11 perfect scores at East participated in speech or debate. In the past two years, all of them have. And as I look through the names of past perfect scores throughout the state, I recognize many students from other schools who I competed with in high school speech. I think this undoubtedly speaks to the power of speech and debate to foster the values and skills which lead to academic success. Ultimately, on its own, my ACT score doesn't mean a lot to me. After a certain point, I don't believe that the ACT serves as a measure of intellect or even of college readiness, but more so as a measure of willingness to prepare adequately for the test. Despite this, I am grateful for the assurance that hard work yields tangible results, and I'm grateful that I am privileged enough to have the resources to do well on the test. One of these privileges was undoubtedly a public educational system that the community has invested in for many years. And regardless of my feelings about the ACT, I maintain that academics and a commitment to learning are of incredible importance in my life. I believe that education, especially in its ability to encourage nuanced arguments, is the key to many, if not all, issues my generation will face. Next year, I will attend Smith College as an intended government major, where I look forward to joining a long tradition of engaged women who value education. Thank you.
Thank you, Emma. Next, I would like to introduce Cole Shank from Lincoln High School.
Hello, my name is Cole Shank, and this May I graduated from Lincoln High School's International Baccalaureate Program. I'd like to thank the school board for inviting me here to speak today. Lincoln High, as you should know, is an incredibly diverse school, and for this reason, while each high school naturally has its own experience, the culture of Lincoln High is something special. At Lincoln High, students are exposed to dozens of cultures and languages over the span of a single day, which I believe can only be a positive thing. All activities support each other, and outstanding performance and excellence is visible throughout a broad range of these activities. Additionally, the teachers and staff are genuinely committed to the students. One experience I had directly with this is when I found an IB course I wanted to take, higher-level physics, most advanced offered in the program, was not available at Lincoln High School. For many years, my life and career goals have been firmly rooted in the field of physics research. This is a field I find highly interesting and fulfilling, and knowing this, IB coordinator JP Caruso, as well as my physics teacher Will Smith, worked with me to devise a plan that would allow me to pursue a course as an independent study. This is just one of the countless examples of the support I received at Lincoln High School, not only to exceed my education, but to mold it into what was best for me and what challenged me personally, in turn helping me grow and learn to my fullest potential. So far, much of this speech, I'm sure, sounded like an advertisement for Lincoln High. Well, not intended as such, I think it's hard for any talk I give about my school years to not come off that way to some degree, because I could not imagine my high school career anywhere else. I don't think I would receive an education on par with Lincoln High in any of the world's most prestigious schools, public or private. Through LPS, I also attended Sheridan Elementary School and Irving Middle School, both of which I had the privilege to work one-on-one with a mentor. This opportunity helped me develop my skills and learn in a way that was immensely impactful. While it's unfortunately not an opportunity available to all students, the mentor program is a highlight of LPS and very beneficial in allowing students to pursue their own interests in a way that is unique to the school district. This fall, I'm attending the Honors College at the University of Minnesota Twin Cities, majoring in math and physics. It is only thanks to the opportunities afforded through LPS that I'm able to continue living out my dream. Lincoln Public Schools is truly a gem of Lincoln and greater Nebraska, and I hope that it continues to shine as an example of the power of good public schools and its mission, and continues its mission of allowing every student to succeed. Thank you.
Thank you, Cole. Last but not least, Greg Hubbard from Lincoln Northeast High School.
Hi, I'm Greg Hubbard. I graduated from Northeast, well, in the spring, and thank you all for letting me talk tonight. So my high school career was very busy. I was in ROTC, cross-country, track, academic decathlon, math club, blah, blah, blah. The list goes on and on. And I don't think enough emphasis gets put on being involved, because everyone's scared that they won't have time to study. But what I noticed with me at least is I put myself in activities where the coaches and the teachers expected you to do well and expected you to keep up your grades, and I noticed that I would always live up to their expectations. That was a really important part. Another important part to my academic success was just like my curiosity. So whatever I was learning about, I would find some topic in it that was really interesting to me. So I never had to force myself to learn. It was always just for my benefit, and, I mean, it's kind of selfish, but I really wanted to learn it. My parents really helped with this, because anytime I want to learn anything, they'd learn it with me, and they'd help me, and my teachers would make everything fun, and even the weird questions I would ask them, they would always answer, and I'd just kind of dismiss it. I want to go into quantum physics, which is really abstract field, and it's kind of really hard to do anything in it. So getting the 36 on the ACT kind of gave me hope that I could do it, which is really important to me. Next year, I'm going to be dual-majoring in math and physics at UNL, and I have a neat little job set up already. I'm working under the quantum physics professor, and if everything goes well, and I don't mess up too bad over the summer, I get to continue doing it over the year, which is really great. But I kind of get that opportunity without reaching out to him and asking him for more opportunities. So just kind of staying involved and reaching out yourself, I think, is important to doing it in academics. Thank you all again for letting me speak.
Emma, and Cole, and Greg, we're all very proud of you, and we look forward to seeing all the amazing things you do in the future. Thanks for coming tonight.
And I'm just curious, do you have anyone in the audience that you'd like to introduce? Because I do see some people I know out there. Maybe you have some parents out there? Would you like to introduce them? Would the parents of these three bright students stand up, please? Maybe not. They did. There we go. Okay.
You have to give your parents their moment.
Yeah, parents love it. Thank you so much. So I ask one thing of all three of you. Go away, learn everything you can, but come back to us. Come back to Lincoln, because we need you here. Board, anything else you'd like to say?
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Well done.
And next, we have the Foundation for Lincoln Public Schools. Wendy Van, please.
Point, lots of tough acts to follow here, but I'm here today to also celebrate a little bit, and I want to give you kind of our year in review, just a couple of snapshots. This year, at the Foundation, we are on track to raise over $1.1 million for students. We welcomed over 600 new donors to the district. We raised over $190,000 for classroom needs through our Fund in Need program. We ranked as the seventh-best K-12 education foundation in the nation, according to the Stepping Up report. We've distributed about $600,000 to projects ranging from music to math, science to study abroad, and basically, if a student needs support, we have the fund to be able to help them. We supported 217 families in crisis. We awarded 105 scholarships to 84 students totaling $330,778, and we're managing nearly $11 million in assets that are all designated for the future needs of our students. But one of the things that I wanted to really bring to you tonight is a celebration of our educators, because our 32 ACT students start with that amazing nugget, and that's our teachers who really bring it out of them. And the Foundation is privileged to, we're kind of obsessed with great teaching, and it's no secret that we are filled with exceptional teachers here. They come to school and work at school early, they leave late, they encourage and challenge and motivate their students and colleagues. And each year, we reach out to the district employees and ask our educators to nominate a peer that they know goes the extra mile, celebrating those unsung heroes for our children. This year, the field of talent and passion blew us away. Each of these individuals was ambushed at their schools, surprised by their peers, and honored in the company of their families as they received recognition and a cash award for a job well done. We wanted you and our community to have a chance to meet and recognize these 20 amazing individuals, 10 of whom are here tonight. You need to know that some of these took the funds that they received and used it on a well-deserved treat for themselves. Some used the funds to pay for additional education, while others invested the funds into a project or a school that they had a passion for. They are truly servant leaders. As I read your name, I want you all to join me at the podium, and then I'll have you talk about the schools that you're from as well. So Amanda Mueller won the Florence J. Clark, come on up, nope, sorry, the Florence J. Clark Middle School Award, recognizing an outstanding middle school teacher.
Hi, thank you for having me this evening. I'm at McCoe Middle School, or I was, I just finished my eighth year there, and I'm moving to Student Support Program as one of the middle school teachers. So I'm excited to start a new adventure and, you know, service students in a different way. Thank you.
Michaela Schwartz is another amazing Florence J. Clark Middle School Award winner.
Thank you for taking the time to see me tonight. I appreciate it, and I appreciate the Foundation for the support that you've given us. I'm a special education teacher at Lefler Middle School, and I think the privilege of teaching is probably one of the greatest honors I've ever been given. Truly, if you need to spend a day in my classroom, you will understand what these children bring to us, and it's with humility that I accept this. Thank you.
Denise Hunsaker won the John Prosh Health and Physical Fitness Award.
Hi, thanks for having me. I'm a fifth-grade teacher over at Zeeman Elementary, and my passion has always been with physical fitness and wellness. I found out that also my passion was back in the classroom, so I have a wonderful opportunity at Zeeman to bring in wellness and physical fitness into my school. So that's my passion, and that's my love, and I love doing both things, so thank you for having me.
Isal Matesse won the Leola Bullock Multicultural Award.
Hi, thank you for this recognition tonight. I'm very honored to receive a 2018 Leola Bullock Award. I work at the Career Academy, and I've been with LPS for 10 years. Multicultural education is my passion, not only in my classroom, but I try to share that across the state with my colleagues. I'm very honored to work for a district that not only says "all" means "all," but they are intentional about it, and they do the work to prove that, and most importantly, they honor and recognize it, and so thank you for this award.
Did Tim Muggie walk in? There he is. Tim Muggie won the Marie Bork Leadership Award, which recognizes the impact of great principles they have on the lives of their students and teachers.
Well, good evening. I'm Tim Muggie, the proud principal of Roper Elementary School, and I want to share with you that I am humbled and I am honored to receive such an award, thank you to the Foundation and Lincoln Public Schools, but I want to share with you that we don't do this work alone, and how lucky I am to have the mentors that I have had throughout the years to teach me and bring me up, and how lucky I am to work with the administrative team and teachers at Roper, the parents and students. I am truly lucky. We do everything as a team at Roper Elementary School, so I'll share with you that I don't accept this award for myself, but I certainly do accept it for the Roper community. So thank you so much.
Next is the RL Friedstrom Award, given to, recognizing a teacher or coordinator who's shown outstanding leadership qualities, and it's Nancy Bear.
Hi, thanks for having me. I'm a social worker. I'd like to say I recently retired from Prescott School, spent many years with the district crisis team, but the most awesome thing is I started in 1987, third social worker hired by LPS. We're now up to almost 40, and thank you for that. Social workers are proud to serve and support teachers, principals, and school staff. Thank you.
Next is the Ruth Eichmann Early Childhood Award, which recognizes an outstanding early childhood educator, and it's Sue Hedrick.
Hi, thank you so much. I also am retiring, or I have retired as of May, and I just want to say thank you for the best job I could ever have in my life. And there wasn't a day where I didn't get more from the students than I gave to them, I'm sure. I hope to, you know, use the funds that were given with this award to give free ukulele lessons to maybe people that wouldn't have the chance, because that's a real passion. I always started the day with that, and I just, I was at K-HO for the end of my career, and it has just been the best. And I love leaving when I just have passion for it and I hope to continue making a difference. So thank you, everybody. It's a great job.
One of our new awards this year is the Saw and Soul Work Award, and it recognizes an LPS administrator, non-principal, who strives to support teaching and learning to create a world-class school district. And the inaugural award goes to Ross Dirks.
Thanks to the Foundation for the award, and thanks for having us tonight. Ross Dirks from Pound, I've been there 14 years, been with the district for 33. Friday's my last day. I'll be retiring, and I want to thank the board for, and I know the faces have changed over 33 years, but one of the things I've seen in Lincoln that I don't see in every place, every school system, is this consistency of the board, that your mission is always what's best for students. And I so appreciate that, and that's what you've always been about, and just keep doing that, no matter what else goes on. But thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Next, we have the Union Bank and Trust Award, given to an elementary, middle, and a high school educator who find creative ways to incorporate financial literacy in the classroom. And we have one of the three winners here today, Diane Salabi. Maybe not. She's awesome, she's not here. We also have, the next is Victor Vaughn Memorial Award, which supports a teacher or project of creative nature or one dedicated to a special education student, and this year it's Elizabeth Thompson.
Hi, thank you for having us, and thank you to the Foundation for the award. It was truly a blessing. I was able to take my students, I'm at Yankee Hill Behavior Program, and I was able to take them to the...
Thanks to the Foundation for the award, and thanks for having us tonight. Ross Dirks from Pound, I've been there 14 years, been with the district for 33. Friday's my last day, I'll be retiring. And I want to thank the board for, and I know the faces have changed over 33 years, but one of the things I've seen in Lincoln that I don't see in every place, every school system, is this consistency of the board, that your mission is always what's best for students. And I so appreciate that, and that's what you've always been about, and just keep doing that, no matter what else goes on. But thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Next, we have the Union Bank and Trust Award, given to an elementary, middle, and a high school educator who find creative ways to incorporate financial literacy in the classroom. And this, and we have one of the three winners here today, Diane Salabi. Maybe not. She's awesome, she's not here. We also have, the next is Victor Vaughn Memorial Award, which supports a teacher or project of creative nature or one dedicated to a special education student. And this year, it's Elizabeth Thompson.
Hi, thank you for having us, and thank you to the Foundation for the award. It was truly a blessing. I was able to take my students, I'm at Yankee Hill Behavior Program, and it was, I was able to take them to the Luck Center for Arts and Experience Wheel Throwing, which is something they would not get at our facility. We don't have the capability of doing that. And I was also able to purchase some art supplies, like skateboard decks and spray paint for some canvases, just things that would truly engage my students that I wouldn't have been able to purchase otherwise. And the joy on their faces was well worth it. So thank you for the opportunity to have the Foundation and to have, provide experiences to our students like that.
The Victor Vaughn Memorial Award supports a teacher or project. This is the second winner of the Victor Vaughn Award, sorry about that. And that goes to Rochelle Stoops.
Thank you. I just finished my third year with LPS and my third year at Bryan Community Focus Program. I teach English and theater and now choir also. And so this award was crazy, just seeing this in my third year. But it was something that we could use for things for our theater performance, which we do in the second semester. Our choir performed also this year, so we use that as support as well. So thank you.
And last but not least, at least of the award winners that are here today is Brian Wanzelak. Brian also received a Union Bank and Trust Award. I think he's got a small guest with him, too.
Hey, everybody. It's kind of cool seeing people retiring here. It's like inspiring and jealousy-inducing at the same time. My name's Brian Wanzelak, this is my 14th year at Lincoln North Star. Getting this award was probably, other than working with students, the highlight of my year. It was a peer-nominated one, and it was really, really cool to have one of my fellow teachers nominate me for this. We do a lot of work with economics at the high school level. And it's neat to be recognized for kind of spreading the good word of econ in a subject that people kind of misunderstand a lot. And it's a lot of fun, and it was really, really inspiring to be nominated for that, so thank you for that.
I think you can just see here that philanthropy's not about charity. Philanthropy's about shining a light. And you can see the light coming through every single face here, and how that light just projects onto our kids, and they take it forward into the world. And it's a true honor to join you in thanking these teachers. So let's give them one more round of applause. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next, we have public comment. I do not have any blue cards. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak to the board? Very good. That moves us on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion for approval of the consent agenda? Kathy?
I move approval of the consent agenda. 8.1, Human Resource Matters, 8.2, Routine Business, 8.3, Option Enrollment Student Applications for Next Year, and 8.4, Late Request for Enrollment Option Out for Next Year.
And is there a second? Annie?
I'll second that.
Very good. Are there any questions, comments, or conflict statements? I did not have any. Seeing none, April, would you please call the role on the consent agenda, please?
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes.
Ms. Momgad?
Yes.
Mr. Schulte?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Danik?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
For first reading tonight from the Superintendent, item 9.2.1, Board of Education and Superintendent Annual Goals and Priorities. Dr. Joel, is there anything you'd like to say about that?
Just that I very much appreciate the board dedicating time each summer in a retreat to identify what are the strategic priorities that myself, my team, our district, and the school board are going to be working on collaboratively and cooperatively. So I think we have three great goals, and certainly it'll be another busy year, but it'll be a productive one.
Very good. Is there any other discussion? Okay, this item will come back to us at our next meeting. 9.2.2, the McKinney-Vento Homeless Assistance Grant. Dr. Stavum is not here. Dr. Standish would like to speak about it.
Sure, this is a routine grant renewal that comes to us every year. A portion of this does pay for transportation. And if you notice, there is a deadline of July 16th, so we would ask that you advance this to action.
And Kathy?
I would move to suspend our policy by suspending the second reading and approve the McKinney-Vento Homeless Assistance Grant tonight.
Is there a second? Lanny?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, April, will you call the role on the motion to approve item 9.2.2?
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Danik?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes.
Ms. Momgad?
Yes.
Mr. Schulte?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Very good. Moving on to 9.2.3, the Full Service Community Schools Grant. Mr. Neal, would you like to say anything about that?
Sure, this is the Full Service Community Schools Grant that allows both planning, operation, and implementation and operation of programs that improve the services for families and students. We will target the community coordinators that were originally planned in the 2015 Strategic Plan and presented during the mid-year update in 2017. This does not duplicate funding from the inter-local board funding that serves safe and successful schools. This takes us one step further by allowing us to coordinate across the four quadrants of the city with neighborhood programs to identify specific scenario of needs that help support neighborhoods, families, and students. The grant can be funded for up to five years, $500,000 each year. The match is provided by our lead agency and other funding that we already have, and it does not require continuation of funding after the five years. So there's no requirement tied to the district at the end of the grant. This grant wasn't, the information wasn't available till last week, and so we're bringing this forward to you for first reading. But it's due July 13th. Without a board meeting in July, we would also ask that you waive the second reading requirement so we can move this to action.
Kathy?
I move to suspend our policy by waiving the second reading and approve this Full Service Community Schools Grant tonight.
And is there a second? Lanny?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, April, will you call the role on the motion to approve item 9.2.3?
Mrs. Danik?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes.
Ms. Momgad?
Yes.
Mr. Schulte?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
For second reading tonight, and recommended for action from the Governmental Relations Committee, item 10.1.1, Legislative Guidelines. Is there a motion for approval? Kathy?
I would move approval of the legislative guidelines as attached.
Is there a second? Dawn?
Second.
Any discussion? Kathy?
It just should be noted that the legislative guidelines are the same as last year. This gives Mr. Neal an opportunity to look at the legislation that is on the horizon and apply these guidelines in actions to serve the district.
Any other discussion? Very good. April, will you call the role on the motion to approve item 10.1.1?
Ms. Momgad?
Yes.
Mr. Schulte?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Danik?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
From the Transportation Committee, item 10.1.2, the 2018-19 Transportation Plan. Is there a motion for approval? Dawn?
Move approval.
Is there a second? Lanny?
Second.
Any discussion this evening? Very good. Seeing none, April, please call the role on the motion to approve item 10.1.2.
Mr. Schulte?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Danik?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes.
Ms. Momgad?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Also on second reading from the Superintendent, item 10.2.1, and I am going to put these together, and 10.2.2. It is the Interlocal Cooperation Act Agreement between Lincoln Public Schools and ESU Number 18 for Educational Services Number 9428, and the Interlocal Cooperation Act Agreement between Lincoln Public Schools and ESU Number 18 for Core Services 9427. Is there a motion for approval? Lanny?
I move approval of item 10.2.1 and item 10.2.2.
Kathy?
I would second that motion.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, April, please call the role on the motion to approve item 10.2.1 and 10.2.2.
Mrs. Danik?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes.
Ms. Momgad?
Yes.
Mr. Schulte?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Also on second reading from the Superintendent, item 10.2.3, Community Learning Center Agreements. I think most of us can see all of those. Would you like me to read them all? Very good. Is there a motion for approval? Kathy?
I move approval of 10.2.3, Community Learning Center Agreements with the lead agencies.
Good one. Is there a second? Lanny?
Second.
Any discussion? Kathy?
Just one. Well, we didn't name these people, I don't know, maybe we should read them for a different reason. Community learning centers operate within our community because of great partnerships we have with the nonprofit community. People like the Boys and Girls Club, Lincoln Lancaster County, CDSU Services, Family Service Association, Lincoln Housing Authority, Lincoln Parks and Rec, the Malone Center, the Malone Community Center, Nebraskans for Civic Reform, North Point Community Church, Northeast Badley Center, Willard Community Center, and the YMCA of Lincoln. It's important to recognize these nonprofits that work each and every day for our students during the school year. Sometimes we might think that we take it for granted, but I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Danik. Any other discussion? Annie?
I don't see North Point Community Church in the list. Is it there?
It's on mine.
It's on this list, but I don't know.
It's on the list of the list.
I believe it's in the list in the explanation. Right now, we have an RFP, the Open Up North Star. So we have, we have an older list up above. The contracts match the existing MOUs, and we will have an update on our status at North Star within a couple of weeks.
Good, thank you. Very good. Any other discussion? Good. Seeing none, April, please call the role on the motion to approve item 10.2.3.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes.
Ms. Momgad?
Yes.
Mr. Schulte?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Danik?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Also on second reading from the Superintendent, item 10.2.4, the Proposed Agreements with Administrators, Custodial Employees Association, Maintenance Employees Association, Nutrition Services Workers Association, Office Professionals Association, Para-Educator Employees Association, Technicians and Transportation Employees Association. Is there a motion for approval? Kathy?
I would move that the Board of Education ratify the proposed agreements with the Administrators, the Custodial Employees Association, the Maintenance Employees Association, the Nutrition Service Workers Association, the Office Professionals Association, the Para-Educator Employees Association, the Technicians and the Transportation Employees Association within 2018-19 school year.
Very good. Is there a second? Lanny?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, April, will you please call the role on the motion to approve item 10.2.4?
Ms. Momgad?
Yes.
Mr. Schulte?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Danik?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Also on second reading from the Superintendent, item 10.2.5, Proposed 2018-19 Pay Rates for Substitute and Miscellaneous Employees. Is there a motion for approval? Lanny?
I move approval of item 10.2.6, the Proposed 2018-19 Pay Rates for Substitute and Miscellaneous Employees.
Is there a second? Dawn?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, April, please call the role on the motion to approve item, and it is 10.2.5, correct? Don't worry, we got it.
Mr. Schulte?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Danik?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes.
Ms. Momgad?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
We do not have any emergency actions at this time. We do not have any items removed from consent agenda. That brings us to information items and reports. Are there any board committees wishing to report tonight? Mr. Boswell?
Thank you, President Duncan. It's my pleasure tonight to report that tomorrow will be the first meeting of the Lincoln Safe and Successful Kids Interlocal Board. And the appointments from this board to that board are President Duncan, Mrs. Danik, and myself. Tomorrow is our organizational meeting, so we'll be doing such exciting things as adopting rules of governance, electing officers, scheduling our regular meetings, and establishing a budget approval process.
Sounds wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Boswell. I'm from the Career Academy. Mr. Schulte, anything to report yet?
No, I have not yet attended a meeting. I look forward to doing that soon.
I look forward to your report. That brings us to the Superintendent's Update. Dr. Joel?
My report. At the Budget Workshop, we recognized the great work of Sherri Stein School and congratulated her on her retirement. I'd also like to embarrass Thomas Christie, whose last day is Friday as well, and thank him for, I believe it's 43 years of dedicated service to Lincoln Public Schools in the last couple of decades, leading our cultural proficiency and cultural competency work. Thank you, Thomas. It's been a pleasure working with you.
That concludes my report.
Wonderful. We have a monthly financial report. Are there any questions on the report? Very good. Upcoming events. I believe the only event we have coming up in July is July 31st is our next board meeting at 6 o'clock here at LPSDO. That brings us to our second opportunity for public comment. Anyone? Seeing none, I do not have a request for a closed session. Thank you all for attending. We are adjourned.
Alrighty, let's get going. I call to order the ESU 18 Board of Education meeting of June 26. Ms. Douglas, will you please do the roll call?
Mr. Boswell?
Present.
Mrs. Danik?
Here.
Mrs. Duncan?
Here.
Mr. Mayhew?
Present.
Ms. Momgad?
Here.
Mr. Schulte?
Here.
Alrighty, and Ms. Byer is excused. The Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the back, at the main entrance of the room. I really should put this down when I talk.
I feel a little, I'm kind of in the splash zone over here.
Very true. We have minutes from our last regular ESU meeting from June 12th. Are there any additions? Seeing none. We will have these minutes stand as approved. Now would be time for a public comment. I have no blue cards. Anybody? Okay, we'll move on then. We have no first reading. We are going to head right into our second reading, recommended for action. And that we have 8.1, ESU Number 18 Policies. Do I have a motion? May I, Mr. Boswell?
I move approval of item 8.1, the ESU 18 Policies as revised.
Do I have a second? Ms. Danik?
I would second that motion.
Any discussions? I will make one. I have made great effort to like dive into these, and it's a lot. And so I'm really glad that we have taken the time to catch up with our 21st century here, and it's good to have them keep up with the work that we're doing. So on that note, Ms. Douglas, we, see how we feel.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Danik?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes.
Mr. Schulte?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Momgad?
Yes.
Ms. Standish said I can come to her office tomorrow and help her lift that off her desk now. All right, moving to 8.2, our Interlocal Agreement with Lancaster County for the Educational Services to the Youth Services Center. Do I have a motion? Ms. Danik?
I would move approval of item 8.2, the Interlocal Agreement with Lancaster County for Educational Services to the Youth Services Center, number 9422.
Do I have a second? Mr. Boswell?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Douglas, will you give a call?
Mrs. Danik?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes.
Mr. Schulte?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Ms. Momgad?
Yes.
Alrighty, so then we have our second time for public comment. Sherri, don't you have anything you want to say? Don't, nothing? All right, we'll move on. We have no requests for a closed session. So it is my pleasure to adjourn this ESU meeting.